Very great. I'll call this meeting of the planning board of Village of Cold Spring to order. We have a few items on the agenda today, including a public hearing. I think we can just jump right into it. So for 40 Main Street, we have updated presentation. Rachel, would you like to come and walk through the board?
Oh, sure. I'll print a copy as well.
Yeah, we have copies up here. So, yeah, we'd love to hear. Yeah, you can sit there. It's fine.
Thanks. Oh, yeah.
Apologies. I jumped ahead. I need to ask the board, would anyone like to add or modify agenda items?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any minutes to approve. Are there any reports of members?
Nope.
No.
Well.
We have no correspondences. Now we'll move on to business. Rachel, please enlighten us.
Sure. Yeah. So thanks again for having me. I think after the last meeting, we definitely took our time to kind of do some of the research and just so addressing the issue that, you know, came up last in our last conversation, I think is pretty important to, you know, have a solution to each of these concerns.
Yep.
So I think, as you can see the presentation, you know, after the cover page, we kind of wanted to explain sort of why we came up with this idea and how, you know, there are some sort of context around, this is not a new concept. You know, if it's not a gym, you know, we have ATMs, car wash, their car laundromat, they're all sort of, you know, On-Stops retail concepts. And I think On-Stops gyms, based on our research, has been very common. We actually got inspired by a gym in Park Street, Brooklyn called Kingscape Fitness, which my husband used to go to, which he just used to pee and go in, look at the slot and workout. It just creates a lot of convenience and really good quality amenities for the village. Also just to promote, you know, general wellness and, you know, mindfulness about health. And there are a lot of examples around the world, actually. You know, of sort of this business model of staff gyms, either large size or franchise or just a boutique gym locally. So we also highlighted some of the benefits that this particular location will provide. We will limit capacity so that, you know, everyone feels safe, feel private, and very comfortable. And the offering hours aren't like, most of the On-Stops gyms will be, you know, limited, non-24/7, so that, you know, people can just enjoy the quiet time. It's not super weird and, you know, on Main Street with the lights on. And also I think the noise will be pretty minimum because it's made out of rock. And we will also install some of the cushions as well, just to make sure that we don't disturb our neighbors. And also the capacity, you know, we don't really foresee a lot of issues with parking, just because, you know, there are not going to be a lot of people there at the same time anyway, like three bags. So I don't really, and also we kind of encourage people to walk.
Yeah.
Because most people are going to be around the same area anyway. And we'll make it affordable, flexible, and just sort of try to create a wealthy mentality. If you go to the next page, we sort of highlighted some of the different types of devices and infrastructure that we'll install in the gym that will, you know, ensure safety and prevent or minimize, mitigate, you know, injuries, accidents, emergencies, and crimes that we mentioned last time. So surveillance cameras will be in place throughout the gym. There will be multiple, the door, middle of the gym, rear end of the gym. And we will be installing panic buttons. I think rain will be a good solution for that because you can just press it. We will have, you know, it connects to, so it connects to our subscribed call center. There will be the ones that when you press it, you know, someone from the end, from the end of the line will answer and then kind of call down when it's needed. And also we'll get a location on our phone as well, so like an emergency alert. Safety station that, you know, provides first aid kit and the AED thing. I think I'm also open to explore, you know, CPR, AED affiliated programs, so that, you know, if members are interested, we can just kind of join in on a same program to kind of learn about how to do CPR. Smart lock. So I think the, we mentioned the app that we're going to be using is has like an associated company that does like the door locks. So whenever someone books a sign, an automatic code will be sent to their phone to ensure that, you know, only that one person can use that code to get it. Apart from that, the next slide is basically how we can create like a safe gym environment, you know, signage for safety, a brochure to kind of do orientation for the members. Full building fire control system. We talked to the owner. She said everything is pretty up to code today. And all that sort of fire systems and alarms are in place. And the place will be clean with rest stations in place to kind of make sure that if someone needs to take a break, they have water, they have towels, they can take a break, they can just breathe there. You know, overall, it's going to be a very comfortable space for everyone. I think from the client, that's from the gym perspective, and the client perspective, I think we need to, well, it's recommended, but we do want to make sure that we do pre-expect screening to kind of identify any particular, you know, precautions or, you know, sort of medication when they're on, or any sort of heart problems or, you know, sort of cardiovascular disease, just to make sure they have mental clearance before they actually join up. But also I think our requirements are, we're not sort of a brass fit or like hit workout area. It is, you know, it's pretty moderate. We have a bike. We're going to have like a skier. So it's not going to be super intense. So it's kind of, no one's going to go that way. I hope not. A liability waiver is going to protect the gym and us. Everyone's going to sign up when they first join as members. And there will be a client orientation induction, just to kind of walk them through everything that's all the precautions and the safety measures. We'll also get the liability insurance as well from a pretty reputable insurer. And they have this very specific insurance policy, very like designed for fitness gyms and owners of the facility. So that's like the main deck. And afterwards, it's just a sample of a briefing questionnaire that is sort of designed by the National Academy of Source Medicine. Later on, it's a simple liability waiver. And the colored version of the site plan building. And the floor plan.
The, are there doors that go into the alley there?
I think it goes to the office.
Oh, to the?
To the, yeah, it's like, I think it does go to the alley at the office.
Alley in the office. Are those going to be locked?
This is going to be like an emergency, fire emergency.
That's on the back?
Yeah, it's like next to the bathroom.
Next to that?
Yeah.
This is part of the building with the deposit area.
Yeah, yeah. So what, what?
Yeah, got your attention.
Thank you for putting all this together. We really appreciate it. It really helps make it clear kind of what the, what the use is going to be and things we should be thinking about. Are there any questions or thoughts that we could ask?
Are you going to have a sign in for people to know that, oh, there are already three people at the gym? Is there like a way for people to know?
Yeah.
It's at capacity?
So the ad himself will limit the capacity. Yeah. So when three spaces right now, they'll, they're not to go to see it.
I have no additional questions. I think I think there's not really much more we can learn about this in terms of in terms of the use and, and so I'm, I'm willing to move, if someone wants to make a motion to consider this application, please.
I just have a question. There's a big window.
On the front, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And what's your plan on, you're going to have like sheer curtains or something?
No.
You're saying you're just going to have it open?
Have it open.
Okay.
It's a little smoky, isn't it? Or is it not?
No.
The glasses and smoking?
No, yeah.
Oh, because I always try to peer in. It's hard for me.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to consider this complete.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
So now we need to plan, to schedule a hearing date. So next planning board meeting is the 12th, which I think not going to be enough time to get something published and distributed. So I think that means probably the next one will be the 25th of July?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Thursday, right?
Thursday, yeah. What is everyone's availability? You're not here?
Sorry. 25th is fine.
I'll be here.
Right. Be here. So go ahead and schedule for the 25th of July, 24.
And this is where neighbors are informed?
So in the, in the interviewing time, certified mail copies will be sent to a list of neighbors that we identify. And you'll bring proof of, or you'll send proof of, proof of certified mail to the board secretary. And what else we got?
Just the publication, but the those things to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
And people on the other side of the street, are they included?
We, we will.
Circle?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to this side of the, kind of where we consider relevant. But yeah, I think for me, it's, it's adjacent properties plus ones that are across the street.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is 6 East Overdeer. Welcome back. Did you receive the report from the village engineer?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So we, we received that. I think we could forward that. So well, I think it's worth reviewing. There's a number of asks in there. I can, I can kind of like summarize it to you, but I think so the couple of things to make note of. With the street, the East Belvedere currently kind of being known as private, there's a, there's a in the chapter 111-16.e, there's a requirement that says for a lot that's being created that has access from private streets. Access from private streets shall be deemed acceptable only if such streets are designed and improved in accordance with these regulations. Now, the, the regulations are, for the streets are about what you would expect for a street. Sidewalks and pavements and things like that, none of which, well, here has.
Sure.
At the board's discretion, we can waive that requirement. I would encourage members to consider that as something that is reasonable in this case, considering the history of East Belvedere and its current state. That's, that's a thing that we will have to kind of navigate when it, when it comes time for the hearing. But the, the request from the village engineer, and actually Will is here with us over Zoom. Actually, Will, since you're here, maybe it's, maybe it's useful for you to give a quick rundown of what's in, what's in the report and the applicant can review it offline as well.
Sure. I can run through a couple of the, the big items. You mentioned the one that was pretty significant about the improvement of Belvedere or waiving that requirement. The other big thing is that there's a history of drainage issues on East Belvedere. So whatever gets developed on the, on the proposed lot, we, the village makes sure that there's adequate ability to have some sort of stormwater treatment so that we, any sort of future development doesn't increase stormwater runoff from the site. So there's sufficient area on the lot to take the stormwater that would come from a new house or something and infiltrate it back into the ground, thereby making sure that whatever runoff comes in the future matches or reduces what it is now. That was the, the other big item. The other items in the memo are fairly straightforward things, just taken straight out of the code. Open space requirements, my property monuments showing those on the plot. Just getting a confirmation from the water sewer superintendent that the sewer's okay in that area. There doesn't need to be any additional improvements to the sewer. Other small items like that. Like I said, the two big items are the, are the ownership of the street and its improvement and stormwater.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Will. I appreciate it. Well done. So quick kind of summary of, of some of that. For the terms of stormwater management, the, the benchmark is, we don't want to make, we don't want to make things worse by making a new lot, putting some house there, some, and, and resulting probably driveway to the block, right? So in order to try to guard against making the situation worse for that neighborhood, a hydrologic analysis that will look at the maximum buildout, which I think is 30, 30% block coverage buildout with a, that's the, that's the allowed, like, busy, allowed to make 30% of the lot non-permeable, right?
Yeah.
So the, the analysis will basically be a maximum buildout analysis with the driveway to, to try to characterize what would be required in order to make the, the stormwater management at least neutral, if not reduce. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
Yeah. Oh, and the, the last addition to that is that there's a, I think there's trees or at least a tree that's like kind of in the, in the middle of the buildable space. So that, that scenario probably should consider that tree happy to be removed as a part of that. No. Should be a small, I believe it's a small part of, of the hydrologic analysis, but it's something that should be considered.
Okay. So how do we go about this?
Yeah, yeah. So the next, so basically you have a, you have an engineering firm and I think you commissioned to do the original site plan. I, I think that like, I would check with them to see if they're able to do a hydrologic analysis. Will, you, you thought that that was something that would, should be within their purview, right?
It should be for, for your engineer. It should be a fairly straightforward ask. What he would do is do some calculations to figure out what's coming off the site under existing conditions and then what it would look like under max buildout conditions and what sort of stormwater would be required for the max buildout. And then do you have space on the site to actually put that stormwater in there?
So my question is, because I'm not building myself, and, you know, we deemed it a minor subdivision already, right?
Yeah.
What is, you know, are we just doing this to make sure that somebody else can build on it, really?
Yeah, so you can think about it like this, like if you, if you take these things too separately, right? We say, oh, we're, we're just going to consider like, is, can we subdivide this from a, from a dimensional requirement? Subdivide it and then it goes on to someone else and then they build whatever they're going to build. That doesn't come back. This is our time to make sure that whatever the, whatever stipulations are associated with that plot, they can be, they can be basically codified in, as association with the creation of the lot. So as an example, we do the analysis, we say, okay, it needs, you know, whatever it needs, like what, like additional stormwater containment or additional drainage lines or whatever, whatever the, whatever suggestion is, that that can be filed along with the creation of the plot as a requirement for a future build.
And this is going to have to be sent to the county as well? Or is this for you guys? I'm just trying to gauge.
It would be filed with, it would be filed with the plot. I'm not sure if we would need to make an additional notification of that. I think like
Yeah, I don't think so. So this is specifically just for you guys, basically?
It is. It is, well, it's, it's our request, but it is to, it is to be filed, like, along with the, the, the creation of the new plot. So basically it's now associated with that block, by that plot of land.
Yeah.
So that a, that a future owner, when they attempt to build, the, the building inspector will note that as a part of a requirement for building on that, on that property.
Okay. And what is again hydro what?
It, it, it's a hydrologic analysis, but I think it's the, the, Will.
Drainage study.
Yeah, drainage study, yeah.
Drainage study?
Yeah.
All right. And then this is basically at my engineer's speed to be able to get it to you guys, correct?
Yeah. And then Will will basically audit it to, to, to make sure it seems reasonable and, and we'll figure out what's, what needs to go from there. And in terms of the, the broad timeline, I think like when we first met in March, was it March when we first met? You know, it's noted that, that like the four to subdivision, because it's a, it's slightly different process than a normal planning, a normal planning application process for change of use. That there's the, there's the pre-application to get, get the designation of, of major or minor. Then there's the actual like workshop phase where we try to get to a complete application and then we go to a public hearing.
Okay.
And I think I noted then that it was probably like, probably six monthish process.
Not at all.
I'll, I'll.
Yeah, because this is, this is the last thing I need to close on, the house and the property itself.
Yeah.
So obviously times up the essence for me because it's like, you know, 600 bucks a day I pay in.
No, I, I, I understand.
Yeah.
I can, I can see if I can find a reference to it in the video from that, from that, from that.
Well, I don't, I don't need that. I'm not, I'm not pressing you for that. I just, again, I want to, you know.
We're trying to move, we're, we're trying to move as, as long as quick as we can. I think with this, with this, once we have the, the analysis, I think we're like very close to, to being, to having the, the application complete. So I think like, if you can get that back to us in short order.
Yeah.
That I think like, we can probably by next time, hopefully we can say, we can decide that the application is complete and then we'll get the public hearing scheduled as soon as, as possible after there.
Okay. And then next time being the 12th or the 25th?
The 12th. Okay.
Yes, I think if you go.
The 15th. No, sorry. No, you're right. 12th.
Once you get Will's report, I think if you bring that to your engineer, they'll know what to do and they should be able to. Okay, so I'm waiting on the, on the forwarded report. So I need to come with the forwarded report and then ask for the drainage. Yeah, I think I even.
We have, we have copies here if, if you, just to, we'll definitely forward it to you.
Okay.
I just did. I don't know.
Beautiful.
Okay. Any other questions or?
Yeah. And then after the 12th, you said that's when we could schedule the public hearing?
Yes.
As long as everything goes well.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I guess we could try to be aggressive and, and schedule something in advance.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you should wait until you have the complete application to actually schedule it. But if we are anticipating having a complete application, there's no reason we can't get the notice and everything ready to go. So.
For July 25th.
Right, for the public hearing.
For the, it's beyond the 13th then, right?
I believe so, yeah. Okay, so I have to make sure I get that in. Okay. And then last question. I just want to make sure that the, the information that needed to be sent to the county, what was the date that it was sent? Because I know they have 30 days to respond. Do you have that on hand?
I don't, but I think we are probably pretty close to that. We've sent it.
So yeah, I'm not sure exactly what the date is, but.
Yeah, I think for what it's worth, we usually don't hear much.
Okay. No worries. I mean, we've been pretty speedy and spot on with everything as it is. So it's, you know, it's all we can really ask for.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. I appreciate it, guys. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, sorry, before, before we wrap that, does anyone have any other comments or questions for that?
Okay. Thanks again. See you next time. Next time I'll bring donuts. I feel like.
Here is, here is donuts.
Yeah. Bring court just for, you can't bribe public officials, but you can.
After the fact.
You can.
But if you eat the evidence.
Let's move on to the main event. We have a public hearing today for 72 Main Street Application for Change of Use. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I will move to open the public hearing for 72.
Second.
Hearing is open. I'm going to go ahead and read the notice into the record. All right. Please take notice that the Planning Board of Village of Cold Spring will hold a public hearing pursuant to 134-16-1.G Village Law on Thursday, June 27th, 2024, Village Hall, 85 Main Street, Cold Spring. Members of public are invited to attend the in-person meeting at Village Hall or through video conference if you're here. We, the planning board will consider the application by Brian Marmay of Garrison. The owner is 7276 Cold Spring. The subject property designated 48-12-2-2-5 on the tax map is at 72 Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, in the business D1 district, as well as the village, village's historic district. The applicant's proposed change from retail to food service requiring site plan review for change of use and parking table of Village Law. Application materials are available on the website. The planning, the planning board will consider all verbal and/or written statements from all persons interested in the proposed application the various manner described above. The planning board will also consider such further relief as it finds necessary. Thank you. All right, so clerk. Hi. Have, has the notice been timely published in official newspaper?
Yeah.
Right? Has the applicant provided proof of mailing to affected parties?
He tells us.
Okay. You have this stony for for, no, you have seven main, 66 main, five floor, 73 main, 68 main, 75 main, 80 main, 79 main, 70. Anyone like to look through? Well.
No, I wouldn't.
Okay.
You did a good job.
Yeah. Has the village clerk perceived any comment from the public, whether in writing or email?
No comment, no one.
Or a person, they stopped by, gave you a piece of their mind? Okay. We, we made a, we made a secret determination of this earlier, didn't we?
Oh, I think so. Yeah. I mean, it's a type two.
Yeah. What is, for avoidance of doubt, should we go ahead and say for the record that, that we have determined it as a type two?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, we, we determined this was a type two action under secret. All right. Let's move on. Do you want to describe the application to the, to the public?
Should I sit up there somewhere? So we, and upon some further research, interestingly, we found that historically the building was in fact a butcher shop and delicatessen many, many years ago.
Back to its roots.
Back to its roots. So we are with, with definitely its roots, taking what was kismet back to its roots as a delicatessen. The proprietor, Mr. Flagler, is here in the audience and will be establishing a sort of a wonderful little eatery space with takeaway food and drinks.
Um and drinks uh in what was in seventy two main. Um it will have a small amount of outdoor seating in the sort of side yard between seventy two and seventy six main. Uh and as well as it's some indoor seating as shown on the plan, thanks, the kitchen will be in the rear. Sort of, you know, rest, all all the sort of internal internal wall are remaining as they. Happy to go into more depth, but I feel like I'm just eating your evening.
Yeah, it's it's fine with me, um. I think this the the plans have not changed since the last week of the meeting, right?
Yep. Uh. And I did bring back in some of the larger copies that you wanted.
I think we will probably need them afterward. Uh. Anyone have any? Uh.
No, if if the plans haven't changed since last time, I.
Okay. Uh the sign was coming beyond the glass.
Uh all right, well, I'll I'll open the the meeting to public comment now, um reminded to the public, uh. Have please um state your names and addresses for the record. Um uh remember that questions should be addressed to the board and not the applicant. Um uh the board, the board may choose to inquire to the applicant to provide clarification, but it may not. Um and um board is not required to answer questions probably posed by the public unless it is procedural in nature, but we will do our best. Um and uh written comments must be read to the record, which we have none. So um I think I'll start in the room, and then we'll go online and uh. Open there, are there any folks who would like to make comment here in the room?
I'll start. My name's Carol Powell.
Okay.
So I live and work in the village, um I know Brian for several years, I know the Flaglers and I'm in full support of the project.
Great.
I think it would be a great idea and a great venture.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to make public comment? Okay, we'll move online. Is there anyone online that would like to uh make public comment with respect to this hearing? Only once. Or twice. Thank you for watching. Um. All right, if there's no more um interest, um. Then get a motion to close the public comment in the record.
I'll make a motion, close the public comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public comment is closed. Um, all right, we'll move on to the the board comment phase of this, um. No, yeah. Um. So uh I mean, this is this is a relatively straightforward um application, the. The main addition, I think, that's required is uh, you know, we we do need to make a request from the village board. To provide a waiver, a parking waiver uh for this, uh which I think is appropriate, given. The number of uses active on the on the property and the limited, the limited parking that's there unavailable. Uh I also um am excited, uh I think it's it's a good, it's a great addition to. Um as a use to the to the village and and um. Uh. And uh I'm, I think it's the that that benefit to. To the um Main Street, Tappus Street. Anyone have anything else they would like to add or?
No.
Have more food options, simple food options or?
Yeah.
Nice to have.
Um, okay, um.
Does this go to any other board? After us?
Just the village board for those.
A waiver.
Yeah, yeah. Uh all right, well, um if there's no more comments, um I'll uh ask for a vote to approve the application and authorize. Chair to sign the resolution.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Uh resolution passes, um congratulations.
Thank you.
Um so uh I believe Jonathan has a a draft.
Yep.
Um and does it include the, uh we also have a draft of the of the letter to the village board.
That's right, yeah, and I should remember if you did it last time or not, but if not, then um. The court should make a motion to authorize you to uh submit a letter to the village board concerning.
We did last time, but um. Yeah, cuz I think we, I initially thought maybe we do it before, but on reflection, procedural, I think it's more complicated if I do it before. Um. Okay, um. Uh to the resolution. We did we just said last time that I don't actually need to read the whole thing into.
No.
The record.
And I've actually, that one's got a uh highlight on it, so I can send you a cleaned up copy if you want, that um.
Oh, this this didn't go before the H G M B.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you especially, now we can. Uh get this on the docket for today, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your uh kind of, kind of uh. Uh working with us on on getting the getting things through, uh we can only work as substitute.
Absolutely, well, thank you.
Um. We have any more business, well, if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn for the evening?
I'll make a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Hello?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.